Good evening. Thank you for joining Congressman Jerry Nadler for tonight's Telephone Town Hall Forum. At any time during this call, starting right now, you can press star three on your phone's keypad if you would like to ask the Congressman a question. It is now my pleasure to introduce Congressman Jerry Nadler.
Good evening, and thank you for joining me tonight for this Telephone Town Hall to discuss the issue of health insurance reform. Over the past few weeks, hundreds of people have called my office on this subject. Many support a single payer plan, as I do. Many are for a strong public option, as I am. And still others raise concerns we have heard recently in the news, from the creation of so-called death panels to the elimination of Medicare and private insurance, assertions which are totally false. The purpose of having this forum over the telephone and not in person is simple. I want to reach as many people as possible. We will probably have between five and 10,000 people on this call. After tonight's forum, I will continue to speak to constituents at events around the district and answer your questions on health care and other issues. In a couple of minutes, I will go over the format for the question and answer portion of this call. But now, let's talk about health insurance. We have many problems with our health insurance system. First, it is incredibly expensive. We spend 17% of our entire economic output every year on health care. No other country in the world spends more than 9%. And it is getting less affordable every year. The cost of health insurance for a family of four has increased from $8,400 a year in 2001 to $15,500 a year today. Health insurance premiums are increasing at more than five times the rate of inflation. People are finding it more and more difficult to afford health insurance. That is one reason why 47 million Americans have no health insurance. And those of us who do have insurance pay about $1,100 a year to cover the costs of the emergency rooms and hospitals that give uncompensated care to uninsured people. Second, we don't get very good results for all this money. The United States is 21st in life expectancy in the world. An American can expect to live 4.6 years less than a Japanese person and 2.6 years less than a Canadian. 20,000 people die every year, die every year because of lack of health insurance. Third, even insured people have real problems besides the skyrocketing premiums. 55% of all personal bankruptcies are because of medical costs. And 75% of people going bankrupt because of medical costs were over their heads in medical debts had health insurance, health insurance that proved inadequate when someone in the family came down with an expensive illness. Seniors have trouble paying for their prescription drugs if they fall into the donut hole. And I have to remind you at this point to press star three if you want to ask a question. And all the while, 14,000 Americans lose their health insurance every day. Thousands more fear losing theirs because of bankruptcy or job loss. Lifetime and annual coverage limits and increasing copayments and deductibles are a tremendous burden. But the insurance companies are enjoying record profits. It is time for Congress to act. The legislation currently under consideration in the House will solve most of these problems. Under our legislation, if you already receive health insurance from your employer, you keep it. If you're on Medicaid or Medicare, you keep it. In all likelihood, your policies under these plans will improve. But as you know, there are millions of Americans who don't have Medicare or Medicaid and who don't receive insurance through their employers, and they are particularly vulnerable. Right now, these people must buy individual health insurance policies on the private market. Many can't get any such insurance because of pre-existing health conditions. Essentially, those who need health insurance the most can't get it. What's more, if you have a policy and develop an expensive illness, private insurance companies will look for any excuse to rescind your policy, even though you've been paying in for years. This happens every day. Even when you think you have a good insurance policy, you are usually subject to annual and lifetime benefit caps. And if you develop an expensive illness and exceed the caps, you're on your own. And the copays and deductibles alone on an expensive illness can bankrupt you. Under our bill, there will be no more annual or lifetime benefit caps. Annual out-of-pocket expenses will be capped at $5,000 per individual and $10,000 per family, no matter how expensive the illness. There will be no discrimination allowed on the basis of pre-existing conditions and no rescissions of policies permitted. All health insurance policies will include basic coverage minimums. Our bill will allow no deductibles or copays for preventive care. Children will be covered under their parents' plans until the age of 26. And low-income people will be subsidized on a sliding scale in order to obtain insurance, either through the public or private marketplace, I should say, low and moderate income people. The bill will require all employers, with the exception of small, very small businesses, either to provide health insurance to their employees or to pay into a government fund to pay for insurance. If your employer already provides insurance, nothing will change. If you don't receive insurance from your employer because you're self-employed or are laid off or otherwise, you'll be able to buy insurance at group rates, not individual rates, group rates, on a government-created market called an exchange. You'll buy it from private insurance companies or from a public option that will compete with the private plans. We expect the public option to offer better services at lower premiums and thus provide competition to the private insurance companies, competition that will force their prices down, or as the President says, "keep them honest." The public option is the best way to bring down the ever-rising cost of health care. Without the public option, there is little chance of keeping premiums down, and the private company's prices would continue to go through the roof. We simply cannot afford those high costs. For seniors, the legislation will build on the current strengths of Medicare, which is far more efficient than private insurance options. Compare the overhead for Medicare, which is 2% to 3%, to the overhead of private companies, which ranges from 15% to 35%. By passing this bill, we will be able to fill the infamous so-called "donut hole," an unfair technicality that costs seniors thousands of dollars just to pay for the cost of their prescription drugs. In order to pay for all of this, we will create savings in the current health insurance system by cutting the profits and costs of insurance companies and reducing inefficiencies. There will also be a tax surcharge for people making over half a million dollars per year, the richest less than 1% of all Americans. For many years, I have supported the single payer system, as I said before, a Medicare-for-all type of plan. Unfortunately, there simply are not enough votes in Congress to pass such a single payer system. But we now have an opportunity to make absolutely essential improvements to our health insurance system. But change threatens the profits of the insurance companies, and it threatens other special interests, too. So they are financing a campaign of lies and distortions to create fear. All summer, we have seen a massive disinformation campaign designed to scare us with talk of mythical death panels and euthanasia. I don't believe these rumor mongers are winning. I don't believe the American people are so ignorant as to be deceived by them. But they are drowning out true debate on this very important issue and bullying into silence those with legitimate questions and legitimate concerns about the legislation. As we begin the question and answer segment, I want to say that tonight's format does have its limitations and advantages. Only one person can speak at a time. If you want to ask a question, as I said before, press star three on your telephone, and you will be put into a queue to ask a question. My staff will then pick up your line and ask what specific issue you'd like to talk about, and you'll be placed back onto the queue. We will do our best to discuss a good variety of issues and questions. Because of our limited time tonight, we won't be able to get to every one of the questions. I will do my best to answer as many as possible, but if your question is not addressed, you will be able to leave a message at the end with any further comments or inquiries or questions. I also want to point out that there are a number of reporters listening into this phone call as well. With that, I'd like to open up the Town Hall to questions, and I want to thank you in advance for participating. And again, please remember to press star three on your phones if you'd like to ask a question.
We will now open up the question and answer session. I remind you that if you would like to ask a question, and haven't already, please press star three on your phones. Callers, when you are up, please ask your question immediately. We want to get to as many people as possible. Thank you. Our first caller will be Ms. Ruth Meyer from Brooklyn, who has a question on prescription drugs. Ruth, you're live. Go ahead with your question.
All right. I want to know why the lobbyists got away with the government not picking up the, oh, let's say, the majority of the pharmaceuticals that everyone has to pay, where other people, other countries, get it in bulk and we have to pay regular?
Well, that's a very good question. And let me just explain what the question is about. Under the legislation that the Republican Congress passed in 2003 for Medicare prescription drug benefits, the pharmaceutical companies, I'm sorry, the Medicare, under Medicare Part D, Medicare is prohibited from negotiating the price of the drugs. Now, if it negotiated the price of the drugs, because Medicare has such a volume purchasing power, it could negotiate much lower costs, as other countries do, as the Veterans Administration does. We want to change that. Now, under the version of the bill that is current, although this is still subject to discussion, there's going to be $80 billion in savings by discounting, by the pharmaceutical companies discounting the costs of prescription drugs. But if we could negotiate those costs, we'd probably get even lower costs. And some of us think, and I certainly agree with Ms. Meyer, that we ought to change the bill to do that, and many people in the House are pressing to do that, and that may or may not happen. We don't know yet.
Thank you. Our next call will be from Joan from the Upper West Side, who has a question on Medicare. Joan, go ahead.
Yes, I'm a senior, and I've had Medicare for years, and I'm very pleased with it. And in Sunday's paper, the President had an op-ed, and I'll quote from him. He said, "We'll cut hundreds of billions of dollars in waste and inefficiency in federal health programs like Medicare." And the sentence goes on. But I wonder, what is this waste and inefficiency that he's talking about, because I haven't experienced it?
Well, you haven't, and you won't, because we're not talking about cutting waste or anything like that from individual seniors, and they shouldn't see any result of this. But there are waste and inefficiency, and they're part of the insurance companies that participate in Medicare, and they're part of the drug companies that sell to Medicare. This is what we're targeting. For example, we pay private insurance companies, I think it is 15% more for people that they, per capita, for each person that they sign up for Medicare Advantage than we pay per capita for people who get regular Medicare. This is a pure subsidy for no reason that goes straight to the bottom line of the insurance companies. We want to eliminate that. Medicare should not be a gift to the insurance companies. That is one of the largest sources of this waste and inefficiency. Another one is that we want to shift some of the payment, and this goes beyond just Medicare, we want to shift some of the payment calculations away from the number of tests you do to the benefit you get. For example, we want to tell a hospital, if you treat someone not well, and that's someone that has surgery and has to be readmitted to the hospital within two weeks, we're not going to pay you as much as if you treated them well in the first place so that they weren't readmitted. We want to reward beneficial outcomes, so hospitals are more careful and not simply reward more treatment. So this is the kind of efficiencies we're talking about. Now, there'll be other changes in Medicare beyond that. We're talking about filling the donut hole, so seniors won't have to continue paying hundreds of thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands for their prescription drugs. There'll be improved access for mental health. We're going to expand programs that reward physicians for spending time coordinating patients' care, so that people don't, so that one doctor talks to the other. That's good for seniors, and it's good for the system. We want to eliminate overpayment, I mentioned eliminating overpayments to the private plans. And we think that, remember, we're being told that Medicare will become insolvent in 2017, and that's not Medicare's fault, because the entire health care system, the cost run away. But this, what we're doing here will extend the solvency of Medicare by at least five years. So I hope that answers your question. It shouldn't affect any individuals.
As a reminder, at any point during this call, please press star three on your phone if you have a question. Our next caller will be Ava from the East Village, who has a question on the public option. Ava, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Congressman Nadler. Thank you so much for holding this forum. My concern is that we've been getting reports that President Obama is interested now in compromising on the issue of a public option, taking that off the table, and instead proffering this idea of nonprofit cooperatives. Can you explain the difference to us, you know, what exactly is a nonprofit cooperative? And is it true that the idea of a public option might be taken off the table, which I would find very distressing, frankly?
Well, I would find it very distressing, too. I certainly hope it will not be taken off the table. In fact, I spoke personally to the President last Wednesday and told him that there are a lot of us in the House who will find it very difficult to vote for the bill, no matter what else it does, if the public option isn't in it, because in that case, the bill would just do a lot of good things, but do it by throwing money at the insurance companies, and the cost will go through the roof, and it won't be sustainable. Now, a co-op, now, the President says he is, and I believe him, he's a supporter of the public option, which has already been compromised from what it originally was. But the President says he's a supporter, and is. The problem is that there may not be enough votes to get a public option through the Senate, which is why he's looking at this. Now, the so-called co-op is an idea that comes out of the Senate, comes from Senator Conrad. I think it's wholly and completely inadequate. What the co-op is, is just that, a nonprofit, a private company that's owned by people who sign up for it, and it would be a nonprofit health insurance company. Now, there have been many health co-ops in history. Blue Cross started as one, and all of them, with two exceptions, have either failed or turned into for-profit companies. And they wouldn't have the advantage, because they wouldn't have the advantage of starting out with a large base, it would have to be built up over years, it wouldn't start out with a network of doctors in Medicare or with people, and it would probably not be a national, it would not be able to stem the rising health care costs, it does nothing about rising premiums, and probably wouldn't work at all. So I think it's a cop-out, a political cop-out, and a terrible idea, and should not be considered instead of the public option.
As a reminder, during this call, please press star three on your phone if you would like to ask a question. Up next is Chuck Rosenberg from Hell's Kitchen, who has an answer, excuse me, a question on collateral costs. Go ahead, Chuck.
Congressman, thank you so much for representing us so ably. I want to ask you something that maybe hasn't been part of the major discussion, but I, when I was executor for my mother's estate, I was astonished to see the kind of price gouging, and I don't use that term idly, that went into ambulance services. And I'm wondering if either the Congressional bill or any of the versions you hear about in the Senate is dealing at all with these issues of collateral costs, such prostheses, ambulance services, these kinds of things. I mean, I was looking at a situation where transporting a ill person from one medical site to another, they were charging, you know, $18 a mile. This is without any special, you know, IV or EMT on it.
Yeah, I get the question. Yeah, I get the question. There's a lot, as I said before, there's a lot of waste in the system. We are obviously looking to cut waste in the system wherever we find it, but one of the things you have to do, I mean, and we've been talking about cutting out waste in Medicare and Medicaid for 30 years, and every so often, we do, and every so often, you see some district attorney or attorney general indict somebody for, you know, for some scheme. But the fact is, people are always looking to scheme it, and sometimes they'll succeed, and there's always waste in the system. What you have to do, in addition to working energetically to stop it, is to, is several things. You have to change the methods. We're going to have innovate, as I said before, we're going to have, or started saying before, one of the things we're looking to do is have innovative payment methods, so that we will pay for results rather than just for services. So that if you have three ambulance trips, because the stuff wasn't done right in the first place, and the person was readmitted to the hospital twice when he shouldn't have had to be, you shouldn't pay the ambulance company more, or the, or rather, the insurance, the hospitals more, you should, in fact, you should pay for successful outcomes. We're going to be looking to change that. We're going to be looking at the illness, not at the procedure. And second of all, the public option is very important, because it will provide the wherewithal to cut costs all through the system and pull the cost of the private insurance companies down, too.
As a reminder, during this call, please press star three if you would like to ask the Congressman a question. We have plenty of time left, so please keep your questions coming. And our next question will be from Robin Lynn from the Upper West Side on, is the single payer system off the table? Robin, go ahead.
Yes, I heard that a previous caller had asked that question, but I would like to reiterate, as someone who has for, well, currently unemployed and now having to pay for COBRA, which even with the subsidy is unaffordable, I don't believe that it would do the American people any service to not even have a public payer or option, a public option. We should be able to choose that, I certainly feel, as opposed to being dictated to by the insurance companies, which, well, frankly, we already are. And while I understand that there might not be enough votes to get it through the Senate, do you believe that there is anything that can, any kind of compromise that can happen and still maintain some sort of a semblance of a public option?
Well, I don't know. I certainly hope so. We are standing very strong. As you know, 16 members of the House signed a letter to the leadership, myself included, that said we wouldn't vote for a bill without a public option. That's the most we can do in terms of leverage and pressure, to say we have to have a public option. The reason the public option is threatened is that there are a number of, there's in the Senate, some House members, but more in the Senate, who are saying they won't vote for it. So we have to put pressure from the other side, to say we won't vote for a bill without it. Now, but you were really asking two questions. One was about a single payer, and the other was a public option. I strongly agree with you about a public option. We must keep it in the bill for a lot of different reasons, including those you stated. But second of all, the single payer, I wish we could put in the bill, I wish we could have a single payer, but there aren't more than 80 to 100 votes in the House for it, so that's off the table. But an amendment by Dennis Kucinich went through the Education and Labor Committee to mandate that states be allowed to establish single payer systems, and that nothing, and that nothing in the federal law would prohibit that. And I hope we can keep that amendment in the bill, because a number of states would establish, probably, in a few years, a single payer system. But regardless of the single payer system and regardless of a public option, you, as someone who doesn't have employer-based health insurance, if this bill passes, you'll be able to go onto the exchange and buy insurance at a, at group rates, which is much cheaper than individual rates. They won't be able to ask you about pre-existing health conditions or anything like that. You'll be guaranteed against too much out-of-pocket expenses or about lifetime caps, and hopefully, one of the choices you will have will be not just this private company, that private company, but a public option.
Again, during the call, if you would like to ask a question, please press star three, and we will get to you. And also, this call will go on quite a bit longer, so we have plenty of time to get your questions, so please don't forget to press star three. And our next questioner is Hale Holden from Manhattan. Hale, go ahead.
Thank you for taking the call, Congressman. I have concerns about the Congressional Budget Office projection that this would cost a trillion dollars. In connection with us already being in an extremely high-tax state, it seems like an, you know, unbearable tax burden for the upper-income section of New York. I'm also curious on the public option. In your view, wouldn't it create a situation for free riders, where people would sign up when they have a problem and then sign off the system?
Well, one thing at a time, in reverse order. First of all, no, there's no such thing as a free rider in the public option. The public option will have to support itself on premiums that the person will pay, just as if they bought it from a private insurance company. Now, hopefully, the premiums in the public option would be cheaper than in the private plans. Hopefully, that'll help bring down the cost of the private plans and provide competition. But the public option is going to have to support itself. It's not going to be subsidized by the government. The only subsidies in this, in the whole system, are that there'll be subsidies to individuals of low or of lower moderate income up to 400% of the poverty level on a sliding scale. But they could use those subsidies to purchase the public option or to purchase private insurance. So the public option will not be subsidized by the government, and nobody can go to the public option and get it for free unless they're very low income, in which case they could go to the private plans and get it for free, too, because the government will subsidize it. Now, your second question was about the cost. Now, yes, we have very high deficits, and yes, we're going to have to deal with them, but no, this will not really, this will not increase the deficit. And there's a little confusion here, because the CBO, the Congressional Budget Office, said that this would increase the budget by $245 billion. But the cost of the entire bill is about, and we're talking over 10 years, that's over a 10-year period, that's not annually. The cost of the entire bill is estimated at about $1 trillion over the 10-year period. That entire cost will be paid for. It's subject to the pay-as-you-go rules in the House, and it's entirely paid for, partly by the efficiencies that we talked about before and the cost savings, and partly through the tax increase on people making over half a million dollars. And by the way, it's a tax increase only on that part of their income, over half a million dollars, not on that below. That'll be entirely paid for, so it won't increase the deficit by a nickel. The $245 billion is the cost of eliminating, over 10 years, a drastic reduction in existing payment rates for doctors and hospitals in Medicare, which the Congress, a number of years ago, enacted, knowing that it would never happen. It would be a 21% reduction in 2011. We pass a bill every year to postpone that. And we're going to pass that bill, which will cost $245 billion, whether we pass a health care reform bill or not. No one thinks we're going to allow a 21% reduction in hospital and doctor reimbursements in a year and a half, so that $245 billion is not really a cost of this bill, because it's going to happen regardless. The cost of the bill itself and everything we're talking about is revenue neutral. It will be paid for, it doesn't increase the deficit at all.
As a reminder, please press star three on your phones if you would like to ask a question. Up next will be Igor from Brighton Beach. Go ahead, Igor.
Hi, Congressman. My question is regarding the public option, and there are claims that the public option will provide fair competition for the private insurance companies, but since the government could artificially low prices, why do many continue to deny that this could put private insurance companies out of business, which would lead to a system run by the government?
I'm sorry, the government could, what did you say? The government could, what did you say?
Since the government could set whatever prices they want, like artificially low prices.
Could set what other, okay. Okay, let me, it's a fair question. It's a fair question, and let me answer it. The government is, there are two versions of the bill, in fact, there are several versions of the bill at this point, and I should add that everything I've been talking about so far is the House version of the bill. The Senate has two different versions, and what eventually occurs will be, we're not exactly sure yet, obviously. But under the House version of the bill, the government couldn't just set prices. First of all, the, it would not, as I said, it would not, the public option would not be subsidized by the government. Its income would come from premiums, entirely from premiums, not from government subsidy. Now, the premium might be paid by someone who is low-income and has a government subsidy, but that someone could take his premium to a private plan, too. So he still has to pay the premium. Secondly, the, well, let me say one other thing. We heard exactly, well, let me just say, secondly, the plan, these prices it will charge to providers will be based on Medicare plus a certain amount above. Now, that's one version of the bill. A different version of the bill is that they'll have to negotiate the prices. Which version of that bill comes, of that question comes through will determine how much money we save. If we can use Medicare rates, we'll save about $90 billion over, or $60 billion, I think, over if we have to negotiate rates, that's according to the CBO's estimate. But I have to say, for 10 years, in the late 1950s and early 1960s, when Congress was debating what became Medicare and Medicaid, one of the chief concerns, one of the chief statements of the Republicans at that time who were opposing it, the insurance industry, the medical profession, pharmaceutical companies, was exactly this, that by having a government-run Medicare program, the government would run all the private insurance companies out of business, would force doctors to take significant pay cuts, would force drug companies to lose their profit margins. Not only did none of these things occur as a result of the adoption of Medicare and Medicaid, the very opposite happened. Insurance companies and drug companies have seen huge profits, and doctors have seen pay increases, not pay decreases. So it's the same logic, and we don't really, that was used then, that is being used now, and it didn't hold then, and I don't think it's going to hold now.
As a reminder, please press star three on your phones to ask a question. Our next caller will be Steve from Bensonhurst. Steve, go ahead. Steve, go ahead.
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, hi. I'm just concerned, because if the government takes the control of the health plan, I had to do root canals in my teeth, and I lost them because it was not approved by Medicaid. They insisted I should pull my teeth. In fact, I went to New York University Hospital, and they all wanted to do a root canal. Threw letters, it didn't help.
Well, first of all, the government-
I'm gonna say that, I'm gonna, that under government control, who knows?
Well, first of all, we're not talking about government control. That's not what this bill does. If you have Medicaid, that is a government program. If you have Medicare, that's a government program, and that won't change. If you have private insurance, you'll keep your private insurance, unless you choose to go to a government plan, which you'll be allowed to choose, only if you don't have insurance provided by your employers. Now, right now, Medicaid may have refused the permission to do the root canal, but if you had private insurance, they could have refused to do the root canal. One of the problems we have in the entire system today is that private insurance companies refuse people condition, your doctor says you need an operation, you need this or that, and the insurance company says, no, you don't. Now, we are working in this bill to try to add dental care to some, because I believe we should address this for seniors and for Medicaid recipients. There's still limited coverage, but we wanna put more coverage in, because I think you're entirely right. I think that we should have better medical, better dental coverage in Medicaid, in Medicare, in the private plans. Dental coverage is notoriously not well taken care of, and we're working on that. But, we're not talking about a government takeover, and the problem you have with Medicaid, people have with private insurance companies, we're trying to improve that situation so that you won't have that kind of problem in the future. I'm sorry you had that experience, and we're gonna try to work so that other people don't.
We will now briefly interrupt the question-and-answer session to take a quick policy poll to get your opinion. Your opinions are important to us, and help Congressman Nadler guide his decisions. Polling is done via our touchstone phone. I will ask you a question. After I'm done with the question, I will give you three answers. Press the corresponding number to the answer you want to vote for on your phone's keypad. All polls will have three answers corresponding with buttons one, two, three, or three, excuse me. I will read the question twice. First poll, the first question is, what is the single most important part of the health reform effort to you? Press one for the public option. Press two for health insurance reforms, like eliminating co-pays for preventive care and eliminating discrimination against pre-existing conditions. Press three for filling the so-called donut hole, so seniors with drug coverage do not have to pay for exorbitant out-of-pocket expenses for prescription drugs. I will repeat the question. What is the single most important part of the healthcare reform effort to you? Press one for the public option. Press two for health insurance reforms, like eliminating co-pays for preventive care and eliminating discrimination against pre-existing conditions. Press three for filling the so-called donut hole, so seniors with drug coverage do not have to pay exorbitant out-of-pocket expenses for prescription drugs. In a moment, we will have the results of our poll. For now, let's take another question for Congressman Nadler. As a reminder, please press three if you would like to ask a question. Up next is Ms. Donna Singer from Manhattan. Donna, go ahead.
Hello, Congressman. Thank you for taking my call. I am a senior, and I am receiving Medicare, which I pay for. The money comes out of my social security, and I also have a secondary insurance, which is AARP, which I pay for heavily, and I, my question is, if this went through any of your options, would I be able to give up the ARP part, which is, which I pay five hundred dollars every two months? It's a lot of money extra besides what comes out of the social security for Medicare. Am I being too greedy?
No, you're not being too greedy at all. I mean, there's a lot of things this bill does, and there's a lot of things this bill we'd like to do, but the bill doesn't do.
I already have secondary insurance.
Yeah, I hear you. It's terrible that insurance can be so costly to seniors now. It's terrible that you have to have secondary insurance. And by the way, the Medicare part A is entirely paid for by taxes, the Medicare part B you pay for, and you pay for your supplementary insurance. Under the bill as currently constituted, you will not be able to switch to the public option, or to the, or for that matter, to the private options. This wouldn't really affect that. Some of us are trying to change that in the bill. We wanna put more into Medicare and wanna have more options, but that isn't there now. And I'm not happy about that.
We have the results of our first poll, which was the question, what is the single most important part of the healthcare reform effort to you? Forty-five percent said the public option, thirty-one percent said the health insurance reform, and twenty-four percent said filling the donut hole. Now let's take our next question. I remind you to press star three if you would like to ask a question. Up next is Susan Rosenthal from the Lower East Side. Susan, go ahead.
Hi, Congressman Nadler. My question has to do with, I have Medicare, and I have found that a lot of doctors do not take Medicare, and I'm wondering if this will also hold true for the public option. In other words, will they have, will they be able to opt out of it and just take patients who have private insurance?
Well, first of all, yeah, first of all, one of the things that we do in this bill is to try, is to try to increase the workforce, and to have, to encourage in various ways more, to have more doctors, especially more primary care physicians. In fact, it's notable that in the last forty years, we've increased the number of doctors in this country by forty percent, and the number of healthcare administrators by three-thousand percent. It's a basic problem. But, the other point is, under the public option, the original version of the public option, which is still in two of the three committee bills, is, well, actually, which was in the two of the original committee bills, is that any doctor who takes Medicare would be allowed, I mean, would be automatically in the network for the public option. As a concession to the so-called Blue Dogs, the conservative Democrats, to get their votes, we have had to, well, they're still gonna be initially, any doctor takes Medicare is still gonna be initially in the public option, but they will be allowed to opt out of it if they want to, just as in Medicare. So we're not going to, I'm not happy about that. We'd like to improve that, but unfortunately, we don't have, we had to make that concession in order to get the bill through committee, and I don't know that we can get it back.
As a reminder, please press star three if you would like to ask a question during the call. Our next caller is Gordon Dixon from the Upper West Side. Gordon, go ahead.
Yes, Congressman, this is good of you to do this. I have Medicare, of course, and I have Blue Cross HMO, which I'm very happy with. I've had two major operations in the last ten years, and I am a senior citizen, and my insurance covered just about everything. The funny thing is, I'm never sure whether Medicare comes first or my insurance. Sometimes doctors would ask me, I said, I have no idea what's in the primary. I don't know.
Well, your Medicare is the primary, but the key of this legislation is, you're happy with what you have, you keep it. We're not gonna change that in any way, but the, there will be improvements to Medicare. There will be improvements to Medicare, and to insurance generally. As I said, there'll be no discrimination for pre-existing conditions, no gender discrimination, no cost sharing for preventive care, and no dropping of coverage for the seriously ill. And these are all changes that will benefit everybody, limits on out-of-pocket expenses, no annual or permanent or lifetime caps. But if you like your, and those will all be in everybody's insurance policies, which they aren't now. But you'll keep whatever you have because you like it. And this, the improvements I was just talking about address the problem that people who have health insurance, and who may think they have very good health insurance, if they get a very expensive illness, God forbid a brain tumor or can't, you know, some sort of long-lasting cancer, may find that it bankrupts them, and this legislation will make sure that doesn't happen anymore.
And our next caller will be, our next question will be Helen from Brooklyn. Helen, go ahead.
Congressman, thank you, Congressman Nadler, and I think it's very nice of you to have this forum for us. My question is, I think it was touched upon by the last caller, my question is, why can't we, who are satisfied with our current health insurance, keep it as is, and I think you said we can, and have the government provide the insurance to the forty-six million who do not have medical coverage? And, can we eliminate enough waste in Medicare and Medicaid to pay for that, for the uncovered people who do not have it? You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand you, and I totally-
I'm satisfied, yeah.
And I totally agree with you. I wish you could write the bill. Unfortunately, we have a lot of other members of Congress and the Senate who have equal votes and don't agree with you and me on everything. But the fact is, if you like your insurance, and you do, you keep it. Now, we will, your insurance may have some problems in it that you don't know about, that you haven't had, that you haven't had to face, like a lifetime cap or an annual cap, because you haven't had an expensive illness, but if it has that, it won't anymore. But you keep the insurance you want, there will only be improvements to it.
And our next question will be from Lisa from the East Village. Lisa, go ahead.
Good evening, Congressman Nadler. Thank you very much for holding this town hall. Actually, I think I might have had a few of my questions answered, but a couple of other ones have come up. I have received emails saying that the President has abandoned the idea of the public option, and I wanted to know if that was true or not. A, B, what, the public option, how is that gonna differ from, in terms of the kinds of benefits and care that people will get? I have health insurance, and, no, I'm not happy with it. The deductions are enormous, and it went up forty percent, it's ridiculous. And also, in terms of regulating these kinds of premium raises, what would be done about that, and also, what happened to the idea that the President said that the public option would be as good as what the Senate gets?
Well, you're losing me. I'm trying to remember all the questions you asked. The first one was, did the President, is the President still supporting the public I think the answer is yes. I spoke to him personally last Wednesday, and he said he was a strong supporter of the public option. A number of members of his administration have gone on TV and made ambiguous statements, and then leading the newspapers to say that, well, they're giving up on it, but that would be terrible if it were true, but I don't think the President's given up on it. And after the newspapers, we hear today that they're not giving up on it, that the President's continuing to support it. It's going to be a struggle, because the Senate, it's gonna be like pulling teeth with or without insurance to get the Senate to vote for a bill with a public option, and we need the strong support of the President. Now, we are agreed, we, one of the things that we were trying to do in this bill is to hold down the cost of premiums, to lower premiums. The premiums are crushing the middle class. As I said, they're going up five times as fast as inflation, and the chief means of doing that is, first of all, to have a public option, and the various health reforms we're talking about. The public option, by competing with the private health insurance companies, should hold down the premiums, or as the President says, keep them honest. That's the main, or that's one of the main reasons for the public option.
Our next question from, will be from Miltidas from the Upper West Side. Go ahead, from the Upper West Side.
It's about me?
Yeah, go on.
Well, I just, I just answered, I just asked the question before. I said that, first of all, that the President's healthcare plan is absolutely good, absolutely fair, and it's morally and fiscally responsible and feasible. If we don't do it now, we're gonna be in much, much more trouble later. So, figures, figures in dollar amounts should not scare people out of it. People should have the long range in mind and see that this is the right thing to do, to pass the President's bill. Yeah, and the Congress should be made to understand that, that, that personal interests and should be pushed aside in favor of the interests of our country and the people of our country. This is the most important thing. The public option is absolutely necessary.
Well, I certainly, I certainly agree with you, and I wish you were in Congress as a colleague of mine.
Up next is Peter from Washington Square. Peter, go ahead.
Congressman, thank you for your time. There's very little discussion about the treatment of illegal immigrants in the healthcare bill, but being a trustee of a hospital for thirty-one years as a volunteer, are we still gonna be compensated for taking care of illegals?
Well, first of all, let me say that the bill absolutely prohibits illegal immigrants or undocumented aliens from being compensated for their, from benefiting for the bill. And a lot of criticism has been made that illegal immigrants would get help from the bill. They won't. That's point one. Point two is, I don't agree with that. I think that there's something wrong with that, number, for a number of reasons. First, the reason you just said, that you, as a nonprofit hospital or whatever, you are providing, as you should, healthcare to anyone who walks in the door to the emergency room, and you should be compensated for that. Second of all, even illegal aliens are human beings, and need healthcare. I mean, maybe they should be deported to do it, or whatever, but they need healthcare when they're here. And third, we live in a very dense urban environment, and I frankly, when my son travels on the subway, I don't want people who aren't treated for their diseases traveling on the same subway with him. I don't want him catching some disease because someone sneezed in the subway car. It's a very basic public health menace to all of us, that there's a large population which doesn't get healthcare.
As a reminder, please press star three if you would like to ask a question. Our next caller will be Robert Murphy from the West Village. Robert, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much for this. I'm very interested in certainly the immediate situation, but then there's a larger thing, what we're fighting for. And do you think it's possible to have profit and healthcare exist together, and people get what they deserve and they need, including Wendell Potter's, from Cigna's exposure of the profit healthcare system to the congressional hearing? And the second part of that is, what do you think is the place of these insurance companies and this blow-up and opposition to healthcare?
Well, I do think it is possible to have the profit motive in the healthcare system, and to keep it in reasonable check, provided that you have a robust public option to provide proper competition. But health before profit is, ought to be the controlling fact. Right now, the system is upside down because it's profit before health, but you can have a for-profit system, as long as you have a public option in there that is robust, that has the ability really to compete, to hold their prices down, and to give people an alternative to the private companies. And that's why I'm very strongly fighting for a strong public option in this bill.
Up next is Patricia O'Shea from Seagate. Patricia, go ahead.
Hi, Congressman. Thanks so much for taking my call. You've helped me out a lot. And I'm disabled, and have become worse with my disability, and I've developed psoriasis and things like that, and we're having a lot of trouble getting our prescriptions filled. We're getting refused medical treatment and prescriptions, as in biologics, because of the expense. And we seem to have nobody to go to. Medicare doesn't help us with that. They refer us to Medicaid, and Medicaid refers back to Medicare. I'm at a loss here. Can you help?
Um-
Can you help?
Um, well, we're trying to, in one of the bills that came out of the House, we're trying to deal with the biologics. This is a new field, uh, that hasn't been treated, that hasn't been, um, um, covered by Medicare. We are providing, in one of the three House versions of the bill, for covering, uh, biologics. Um, and, uh, we're, we're trying to, to expand the coverage. I mean, it took us a long time to expand coverage to, um, to, uh, to achieve mental health parity. Now, we're trying to achieve affordable, uh, to make biologics and other such drugs affordable and available. Uh, you specifically, uh, with this specific problem, if you're having a runaround for Medicare and Medicaid, you'd call my office, call my staff, and we'll see if we can help you.
At the end of this call, we will have a, uh, answering machine message where you can leave your questions on, and we can get back to you. That will also, that, so in case you don't have our number, you can leave your contact information, and we will get back to you. Our next caller will be Bill. Um, Bill, go ahead.
Hi, uh, Congressman, thanks for taking my call. Um, I, I am an activist, and I've been involved in the last three national campaigns, traveling out of state and phone banking and knocking on doors and doing all sorts of things to help elect progressive candidates. And I'm, uh, you know, the media is sort of spinning this story that, uh, the right wing has outorganized us on this issue. What's your, number one, what's your take on that? Is that, is that real? And number two, uh, what can we activists do? And in, in national campaigns, we've been able to call into swing states from our home phones and talk to voters, uh, there, there doesn't seem to be any option to do that, um, now, um, so, um, you know, that's my question, two, two parts.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for your work in the last election and for progressive candidates. It is obviously very, very important. And as to what you can do now, well, first of all, I'll tell you what not to do. Do not organize people to go to some Republicans' town hall meeting and try to shout down people. That would not be the right thing to do. What you can do, uh, and, and the fact that they're doing it doesn't make it right. What you can do is, uh, stay diligent. There are many organizations, uh, to, to link up with. Um, I would call, uh, HCAN, the Health, uh, Health Care for America Now Organization, or some of the labor unions, which can put you in touch with organizations that are, that are mobilizing on this front, and they can tell you how to, um, how to most effectively use your time for this.
And we will have our final poll question right now. As a reminder, uh, please touch the, uh, corresponding number on your keys, on your phone's touchpad to vote for the, the answer that you would like. Our final closed poll question is, did you find tonight's town hall helpful? Press one for very helpful. Press two for somewhat helpful. Press three for not helpful at all. Again, did you find tonight's town hall helpful? Press one for very helpful. Press two for somewhat helpful. Press three for not helpful at all. And while we are waiting on our poll results, we will take our, probably our final question from Richard Klugman on the Upper West Side. Richard, go ahead.
Uh, thank you very much for, uh, and thank you for doing, uh, these kinds of calls. I, I hope, um-
Thank you.
-we can, we can have this more often going forward, not just when, uh, uh, a very important issue like this one is, uh, front and center. Um, you know, I, I, I just worry about the path that we are on politically, and I think your last, uh, caller touched on this. You know, in the context of an unprecedented, uh, two-wave elections, we had two thousand and six and two thousand and eight, uh, the voice of the people was loud and clear. Uh, we want the policies, we want the Democratic Party platform. Not everyone, of course, but I think it was fairly clear. And you have polls showing, I think I've seen seventy percent support for a public option, uh, widespread mistrust of the insurance companies, and opponents are conducting a very effective asymmetric warfare. Um, most of this call and, and most of what I hear from, uh, the Obama administration and, and members of Congress are a good-faith policy debate. Should we have the public option? Should we have a co-op? And yet, you have this ugly undercurrent of a vocal minority, the Berther's, the Tea Party folks, the, the people throwing the, the town hells and the Nazi comparisons, and it's, 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 it's very disturbing, and I, I just think the perfect example of this is this end-of-life consultation issue that got twisted and grossly distorted into, by right-wing ideologues, uh, into this, uh, into the death panel discussion. Here's something that is a voluntary, sensible idea, supported by the AMA, supported by the AARP, and, uh, I, I just think the Democratic response here has been appeasement. I just saw on one of the shows yesterday Senator Ken Conrad saying the clause is dead in the Senate negotiations, because some people are, quote, asserting that there would be mandatory requirements for this, uh, consultation. And, and I just think that is wrong. I hope you would, uh, uh, go out there-
Well, I, 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 I agree with you. I think people want healthcare reform. Uh, I, I agree with you. It's terrible that we, um, that the Senate Finance Committee would surrender to this kind of ignorant demagoguery and, and, and disinformation campaign, if they are. I'm certainly gonna continue to fight, uh, for this provision and, and for reform and for the public option. I have to tell you that I think that this is a very deliberate campaign of disinformation, and these people invading the town hall meetings, not for the purpose of arguing with their congressman or debating with him or her, which would, which would be perfectly, uh, legitimate and fine, but for the purpose of shouting down the congress member and constituents that no one can be heard, and the press, to a large extent, has, has cooperated by not covering, um, the, the subject, the, the content of the discussion, but only covering the fact of the disruption and whether, you know, how many people were disrupting and so forth and so on, instead of this, this, instead of, uh, covering whether in fact the, the public option, uh, what, what the pros and cons of it are or anything else. And I think that, uh, it's, uh, I, I, it's a very bad and undemocratic, anti-democratic tactic to use. Um, I mean, again, I've gotta stress to anybody on this call, there's no such thing as a death panel. There's the advanced, the, the provision for allowing, uh, Medicare to pay for a consultation once every five years if the person wants such a con, such a consultation, as to living wills or do not, or whatever, makes eminent sense and, and would help a lot of senior citizens and their, and their families. It's been totally distorted, but, um, I agree with you, and the only answer is to continue to fight for the reform, and continue to fight for the public option, and continue to fight to prevent, uh, uh, surrender to this kind of, uh, ignorance.
If you did not get to ask your question, please hold on after this call, and you will be able to leave a message for Congressman Nadler, and we will get back to you.
I want to thank all of you for participating in this forum tonight. Your thoughts and questions on healthcare are of great consequence to me and to my work in Washington. I'm sorry I couldn't answer every one of your questions, but you're all invited to leave me a voicemail at the end of the call with any questions or comments that I couldn't get to, and be sure to leave your contact information. Thank you again, and good night.